Okay. Scott. Call the regular meeting of the study session of the city of San Claty, March sixteenth, twenty twenty two. To order. Cecilia Galardo Dali, our community development director is sitting in for Adam Matani in the night and Cecilia, would you call roll please?
Sure. Chair Crandall.
Here.
Vice Chair Tyler. Chair Pro Tem McCann.
Here.
Commissioner Camp. Commissioner Cosgrove.
Here.
Commissioner McCawkin.
Here.
And Commissioner Prescott Leffler.
Thank you, Cecilia. We have two items for the study session. The first study session is the West Pico Corridor Specific Plan Update and Architectural Overlay Extension. Chris Wright is standing remotely and Chris, you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chair Commissioners. This study session is on the West Pico Corridor Specific Plan and Architectural Overlay Expansion Project. The city council, I'm gonna first give into background of this project, an overview of what it involves and the next steps. So at this slide, I'll give you the background. The city council in August twenty twenty one had initiated amendments to the city's general plan, the local coastal program land use plan, the West Pico Corridor Specific Plan and the zoning to make several changes that I'll be discussing in this presentation. Since that meeting, the city has had, city staff has had three presentations to the community. One of, the first one was notified, sent out notices to various property owners within the study area as well as adjacent property owners and residential areas. Just, and to let them know that we are going to be doing this project, there is going to be a website. And, and therefore they could get updates on this process using that website and be informed of when we are going to be having meetings. Then we've also been having several meetings with the Los Molinos Business Group to discuss issues particular to that area, ensure that we are drafting amendments that include their input that affect them more than anybody. Then I'll go over the next steps after this. So the West Pico Corridor area is bounded by the Interstate five, Marblehead Coastal to the west and Avenue to Pico, El Camino Real to the south and then residential areas to the east. It includes industrial areas known as the Los Molinos Industrial Park. You have the treatment plants, you have the Pico Plaza and also known as Pico Corridor. And then you have those properties on El Camino Real. This area is also in the coastal zone that's that blue line on this slide. So this plan is a portion of the local coastal program implementation plan that staff recently had discussed with the planning commission. So this project is being done concurrent with that effort and updates that are made of this plan would be incorporated into that implementation plan. And then just a couple other things. City is working with the contractor, Michael Baker and Associates, to prepare an EIR addendum necessary to do one of the parts to this project. And the draft of that EIR addendum will be presented to the planning commission later in this process. We are working on amendments to these various documents and everything will be gathered for presentation of the planning commission at an upcoming meeting soon. And I'll give you more details on that moment. So the first part of this project is to make a land use change at fifteen ten Avenue to De La Estrella. This is really a cleanup item. There is split zoning. You could see on the left is the existing condition. It shows that two parcels have a light industrial designation in the lighter purple and then a heavy industrial designation. So that creates challenges for implementing the general plan policies and really understanding how to regulate the properties and make sense of various issues. And so the council had directed to make a cleanup item here. And on the right, it shows what the results would be is to change the properties entirely to heavy industrial. That would have two effects. First, it would increase the density of just that light purple area. But the effect of that would be pretty minor because those parts of the property are used for access. It is not a lot of new development area that would be allowed by these changes. The second part of it is to make existing uses conforming. There's a towing yard on the property. And this would legalize that, allow it. The heavy industrial zoning allows for towing yards. The city council did make a note that concrete batch plants, which is one of the other uses that you could do with a conditional use permit in the heavy industrial area would not be permitted. So that is what would be reflected in these amendments. And also note that that is the primary, that change is the primary reason why we have to do the EIR addendum is the land use change. A second part of this project is to expand architectural overlay. There are primary circulation routes between the downtown and loop around the Pier Bowl and then back to the downtown. And the idea behind these changes is to have a cohesive architectural district along those circulation routes. So that it's at, right now it's a little disjointed and the idea would be Spanish colonial revival would be required also in these orange areas. Currently it is not. So that if you're traveling between these areas, you would have over time a, a district that would be thematic throughout. The specific plan update would first involve an expansion of the specific plan. And the purpose of that, there's three areas shown on this slide. First, the red area are industrial zone properties outside the specific plan. And there's a lot of similarities between that property and the area in Los Molinos. It's, it's, it is a cleanup item because we didn't, don't have zoning standards for the light industrial. The city council supported using the Los Molinos industrial standards to regulate those properties by incorporating them into the specific plan. Also, this area, it's the, in like a red shading on this slide. That is the general plan, Los Molinos focus area where the community had identified one of eight areas for the greater potential for change. And there's policies there. So the idea of expanding it into these blue hashed areas is to capture that Los Molinos focus area. So the specific plan is a better implementation tool for the general plan. And then the green shaded areas. There is the Benita Canyon Park, which fronts Los Molinos Industrial Park. And so some of the businesses in Los Molinos had recommended that we incorporate that. So there would be more of a thematic architectural district. If public improvements remain to that park, then it would be consistent with the look of that district. There's a need to update the specific plan to be consistent with the general plan and the coastal land use plan. That is the primary reason why we're doing this project. And so here's an example of a change needed. The general plan had increased the density of those orange shaded parcels on El Camino Real from point three five floor ratio to point five floor ratio. And that would need to be reflected in the specific plan. And then there's also some overlays that were added in the general plan that need to be incorporated into the specific plan. So this project would add standards to implement the policies for these overlays. And I'll just tell you, the, the blue is the professional business overlay. The purple, it's a combination of the architectural relay, mixed use, visitors serving commercial districts. And then the brown is the architectural overlay. So like I said, this is a Los Molinos focus area here and red that's outlined. And you're going to see that that area encompasses parts of Pico Plaza, Pico Corridor. And not just the industrial park, but the community largely recognizes the industrial park as the core of what is known as Los Molinos. And when you take the policies in the general plan and the LUP for architectural, it largely requires Spanish architecture throughout the specific plan area. So the brown areas, you would have Spanish colonial revival in those properties. The yellow parcels on El Camino Real are part of the architectural overlay district. But the intent is to have development facing El Camino Real have Spanish architecture, whether it be Mission or Spanish Colonial or some other true form. And so the amendments that we propose would require that type of architecture for any improvements that exceed the grade of El Camino Real. Below the grade, you would have architecture consistent with Los Molinos. The purple area would be the Los Molinos District. And there are policies that pertain to Los Molinos for architecture and landscaping. And that is really the largest amount of time that has needed to be spent on this project is reaching out to the business owners and understanding what Los Molinos architecture includes. So here's an example of a policy. It says that we encourage an eclectic mix of architectural styles, colors, materials, landscaping, public art, consistent with design guidelines and the urban design element. There's some other policies, but what is an eclectic mix? And what is, what is it within the theme of Los Molinos? And so we've had conversation of can you have Victorian architecture? And, you know, I think that there's consensus that the, among the business owners that, that is not the case. You know, it's not to have any type of architecture. It's to have architecture with, that fits the area. There's a, a lot of pride in the area and wanting to keep it within the character that, and heritage that is recognized by the community as a special industrial district to support the surf industry, arts and crafts, business incubation. And so staff is working on design guidelines. That will be a focus of a design review subcommittee meeting coming up in which we'll get into more discussion with that, that group to get some input and and I think that covers that slide. And then I'll just go over my next steps here. So I said the design review subcommittee meeting will get some input on the design guidelines. And then we'll, we're expected to have a public review draft out available in approximately May or June. And then city council meetings approximately in July and August. So that concludes my presentation. Do you have questions?
Thank you, Chris. So put it up to Commissioners, Commissioner Cosgrove.
Thank you. Thanks, Christopher, for your presentation. There's a lot of stuff here, moving parts, et cetera. Did a good job. I, I have a lot of thoughts about this, but I don't want to take the time, but I do want to focus on two important things. First is Pico Plaza. The commercial, community commercial to designation. Just by observation, that center is struggling. There's a lot of vacant vacancy in there. To me, we have a real opportunity with this space to make a statement about what we need, what we need to do as a, as a city. We need more housing. We need affordable housing. We have some issues with that, those challenges. This to me area is a perfect spot for mixed use. You can have in this spot, a commercial, which would be ground floor typically in a mixed use, or you could have dedicated big, uh, commercial area, restaurant standalone pads, et cetera. But you can introduce homes, residential, like a high density type of units that really lend themselves to combinations of market rate and affordable. You could build in this enclave with mixed use, land use, a self-contained community where you can walk to you, where you need to buy your food or get your meals or services. There's so much you could do with this. I feel like if we just continue this vision of commercial only in an area that's already struggling, we're missing a huge opportunity. So I don't know how the rest of the, how, how we proceed with maybe advancing that as an idea. I don't even know if my colleagues have, would agree with it. I'm kind of springing it out on everybody, but that Pico Plaza to me is a gem of a place to make something great. And continuing that as commercial does, it's isolated. It's hard to get to. People don't see it off the main streets except for the freeway. It, from a commercial standpoint, it's not, it's not ideal and you can tell by the fact that it's not growing. And there's vacancies and very few people are in there. When you drive by there all the time, it's very empty. Mixed use, I think, is a great solution. So I would like to just throw that out. Maybe some of my other colleagues will comment on that, but I would like to see the staff consider that opportunity.
Would you like me to address each one of your comments at a time?
Please, thanks.
Okay. Yeah. So that area, it's one of the potential rezoning sites in our housing element. That's my understanding. And Cecilia, if you can confirm that, that's what I remember. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. That, so the, there's a separate effort that would be pursued to follow up on our housing element implementation of which we'll be considering incorporating housing on that site. But that is separate from this project. However, if rezoning were to occur on that property would be headed in to various documents to ensure that they're all consistent. So the focus of, of my role on this project will to to update the specific plan primarily to be consistent with the general plan that we have. And that does not preclude the suggestions that you have. They're, they're well taken and they're reflective of some of the ideas that the city council had considered when adopted the housing element. So that, that is something that we'll have to follow up on separately.
Okay, fair enough. I just, I think, when I hear EIR, EIRs are occurring, I just didn't know if that was also an opportunity to think about the scope. The other, so on the other side of Pico, the north side, west side, the Avenue, Avenue, Avenue Navarro. I drove through there the other day. That is a lot of auto mechanics, I think, repair. It's mainly metal buildings with, you know, big garage door openers. There's actually some homes in there too, as I saw. So the question is, what, what's the purpose of putting an architectural overlay over that area? Because we're talking, the kind of uses that are in there now. It just seems like kind of a burden to put that on those property owners to say, oh, if you're going to do a change, you're going to have to make it adhere to this architectural standard when it's, you know, these are industrial-like buildings. It's auto repair. It's machine shop type stuff, type uses. So that's the question is, what's the thought behind that over there in this corner?
Yeah. So the architecture vision there is not a departure from the existing condition. So right now the specific plan does call for Spanish architecture there and the types of uses that exist there are actually not consistent in part with what's permitted in the specific plan. So what you have there is a disconnect between what you see and what the vision is for that area. And if a new development or major remodels were to occur, then they would be subject to the policies that exist. So we're just formalizing this civic plan, making it clear to coincide with what you have in the general plan.
Okay. My only observation about that is then you're just going to keep getting what you got because nobody's gonna, oh, you mean I have to carry this burden? I'll, I'll just stay what I got. If you look back in there, it's very industrial oriented. I'll just make, leave it at that. To me, maybe what I'm going is more in the strategic direction. This is more what you're trying to do is in alignment with zoning and planning and bring it all together and get some consistency, do some cleanup. And I guess I'm more of a higher orbit here thinking strategically, like, what do we really want to envision here? What are we willing to do here? And then have a strategy put forth, get that socialized, get council vision on it. Then start doing EIRs and then start making general land use changes so that the owners there can actually work with us and see value and see a direction. So I guess maybe that's just something I need to figure out how we can have those conversations. Cause I'm just a little bit concerned that when you go through these areas and you look at the, the current uses, it's not then itself to these kinds of policies at all. So it, it seems to me we need to have a more strategic conversation. So I would throw that out that it's some, if that's possible to do, I don't know how, but I would like to see us have those conversations. Cause I think this area, just shoehorning in these policies, these overlays is, I don't know, the value of that, but I see why you're doing it.
Okay, very good. I'm going to jump in real quick on a couple of those comments. The way we would do it is under new business, we would recommend to staff to request that city council appropriate funds to do that study.
Okay.
We don't have the ability to do that in-house, I don't believe, particularly at this point in time to study those options. The Pico Plaza has been looked at in a whole different bunch of lights. One is a potential transportation center way back when, when the general plan was being done. If that is off the table, then certainly a mixed use would be a, a good opportunity. And that's a recommendation we could make to council so they can appropriate funds and time to study it. The other side is a tough one. It, when we were doing the homeless shelters and all, that was an area that was considered. And it didn't stick. And so there were some strong feelings both ways on that property. So it's got some complicated issues, but Chris is making it comply with the general plan at this point in time. And we can certainly make amendments or changes in the future. I would like to, Mark McGuire wanted to make some comments and I'd like to hear his comments so we can comment on them as well as and Chris, so you can comment on Mark's also. I'll give you the three minutes plus or minus.
Yeah, thank you. I'll try to do it within the three. Hey, Chris, would, would you mind putting up the slide that shows the additions to the specific plan?
Sure.
Oh, Mark McGuire, San Clemente resident here on behalf of a property property owners that I represent, I used to be part of a group that owned some of these parcels in red which are off of Caillago and off of, they're behind El Camino Real, behind the Shade Tree Automotive. So if you look on your exhibit, you can see where those are. There's also an empty lot along El Camino and a little office building with a ramp that goes down to the self-storage below and behind Shade Tree. And those are all owned by one group collectively. It's a little bit over three acres. So the proposal is to include just the back part into the specific plan to capture the industrial, light industrial specifications in the specific plan. That makes great sense. It also has a mixed use overlay because the vision is to try to promote mixed use in that area. So a couple of things that I would say first with regard to the including it in the specific plan, I went through the uses in the specific plan and it wasn't, didn't jump out to me that the self-storage use that exists there right now is a permitted use. So I would certainly think that if we're going to include it in the specific plan, it was always the intention to make that a legal conforming use, not a legal non-conforming use that we would make sure that, that the self-storage is a permissible use in that on those properties. This, with regard to the overlay, this gets into a kind of along the lines of the commissioner that just spoke, which is this, the overlay requires mixed use. The mixed use requires ground floor to be retail or other visitor serving commercial uses and, and requires a floor area ratio of point three five of commercial for the property. And then you can have residential on top and you can have up to either one point five or two point O F A R total. But point three five F A R commercial is not viable on the backs of those properties. Those properties go 300 feet back from the sidewalk. They, it drops down. Now that can be solved with podium or something, but to be 300 feet back off of El Camino Real and try to do retail use or visitor serving commercial uses is just not a viable use. So if we really want to make that area succeed, we should be specifying some more flexibility for the mixed use criteria for that area. And this is a good opportunity to begin that discussion because it's in a specific plan. It only covers a handful of properties. Frankly, I think there are other areas in town where that mixed use needs more flexibility, but this is a good place to start. So I'll end with that.
Stay right there. Chris, would you like to respond to Mark's questions or statement?
Yes, so the, so point taken on the self-storage, there's no zoning actually right now. To clarify that, that issue you bring up, that the self-storage is abuse that's intended to be conforming. So if the properties are incorporated in the specific plan, we'll make a note of that. That's clearly the intent to allow the existing uses to remain. And then in the event that the properties are redeveloped with mixed use, then the, not the industrial uses would go away, you know, that, that you would change it. For the ground for a commercial comment and point three five F A R, I think that's a larger issue that applies to various use zones. And I, I think it really does relate again to the housing element because this site is also one of the sites in the site inventory of which the city would need to, to look at zoning regulations and how they yield housing units and whether there's merit in changing the zoning. So that would be part of that rezoning effort for the housing element. You know, I think that, you know, if I were to try to think of an idea in this project that could work, it would be, I don't know if we could get away with within the current general plan of allowing residential on the ground floor because it's clear the general plan says that it's on the upper levels in the mixed use one zone. So that would be a general plan amendment. If we did it as part of this project, you know, the housing element, it's, it is part of the general plan and it's very clear that actions need, would need to be taken as part of the rezoning. So I would suggest that issue be addressed part of the housing element.
If I could just make one quick comment.
Please, Mark.
So again, thank you for the clarification on the existing. So again, thank you for the clarification on the existing use. That would be much appreciated. I guess unlike the. Commercial center near the freeway that's not, you know, underperforming and the. I agree, more industrial area behind the little shopping center there on the other side. This area is in the coastal zone. And so we're trying to go forward with a draft of the. Implementation plan for the coastal zone. And once you get something approved by the coastal commission, changing. Amending your implementation plan and your local coastal plan is an automatic. One year plus process. I mean, it's really probably the fact of a two-year process. So. It just seems to me like rather than kick that can down the road, there may be an opportunity with this particular area. And I respect the issue of the general plan, mixed use policies. But to, but to start grappling with that issue on these particular properties, which are. Clearly as a light industrial area, an area that is not, you know, seen as a classic visitor-serving commercial area. As their primary zoning is light industrial and the mixed use ordinance, if it has that. Point three five FAR for retail or for commercial and and then. A limit on no ground floor residential, then it's just gonna say stay a self-storage. And I can tell you, I owned it. And we pursued a project back in 2004 and we were clearly gonna have to ask for relief from that. That requirement and, you know, the recession hit, we were able to sell it as a very profitable self-storage. I can tell you the current owners are doing very, very well as a self-storage and unless you create the right incentives, it's gonna stay a self-storage. So again, thanks.
Yeah, I I just wanna mention that I think. There may be a little confusion just because we have a lot lot going on with our work program. But they're all concurrent efforts. So we have the hose, the housing rezoning. We have the local coastal program implementation plan and we have specific plan updates. And in this case, a land use plan amendment and general plan amendment. All those efforts are supposed to come together. Into what would be the implementation plan that is submitted to the coastal commission. So I'm not suggesting that we don't address these items. I'm just saying that this, this. The scope of this project is. It has been laid out by the city council. Of course, if the city council wants to give us different direction, we will respond to it. But we have other direction, you know, and and I I just want to emphasize that these pieces come together. And I just wanna give you that context.
Yeah, and if I could just think, say one thing here, I. I want to emphasize that all of these ideas and recommendations and things to consider. Do line up with all of the other planning efforts that are going on. So these are really good comments. As to consider as we move forward with all of these other policy documents going forward.
I also want to mention, there was a comment about strategic planning. And I, I, I do want to point out that that was the general plan. You know, the general plan, we had 90 meetings with the public and it took four years. And there was a lot that went into that process. Of which policies for the this focus area were results. And now we are in the implementation phase again. City council wants to direct staff to. Pursue general plan amendments, then we can respond to that. But. This point, we're implementing the policies that were adopted by the city council.
Yes, I was trying to make the comment that we would handle that as a separate item after this is completed. Any of those comments. Did we have another, did you submit a card? I'll go ahead and introduce yourself and they'll give you three minutes.
I'm. Been working with Chris, actually, I'm, my name's Gary Jackmini. I, I own Ring Con Truck Center down in Los Melinos area. On one four, it's one fourteen Ring Con Court. I was on the general plan for forty, for four years. And I'm hearing a lot of stuff over, you know, from the general plan. We talked about mixed use, all these different projects and. I, I, and we've had some, we have like a little business group down there in Los Melinos area. And, you know, everybody thinks that we're gonna change zones, we're gonna do all this and I, after me, you know, working with Chris and I do understand. That in 2016, you know, the specific plan was supposed to be done. Now we're just getting to it. So I hear a lot of these things, well, I'm gonna do, wanna do this, I'm gonna change that, I'm gonna do this. That's what the general plan I understand was for to, hey, this is what this is gonna be the next 15 years or whatever the general plan was laid out for. So when you're talking to like the distance over there behind Danny's and industrial and down by us and. Ring Con Court and all that area in the surf area. I look as like, like Chris and I, we've been working on with our group and stuff to make it. When you say that center's not doing good and stuff. Down in Los Melinos area for, I've been there for 30 years, Lion, Lion's Ready mixed with one of our companies. I see no vacancies. There's a few in that shopping center, but. Those places rent, people are happy. There's a lot of business going on down there, the good startup businesses. You know, rest of San Clemente doesn't have that. This is, this area has been this. My goal would be working with Chris, the Pacific Plan. So like you say, maybe one of the auto repair guys wants to put a new face on the building, clean it up a little bit. How, what can I do? Do I have to put a red tile roof on a red sidewalk? No, what what we're suggesting is let's make it your industrial, let's clean it up, let's make it look nice. But you don't have to go through all this process and keep your business going. It's sales tax for the city. It's an area that's incubated a lot of things like. Rainbow sandals and numerous other businesses. That's our goal down there is not to have some Dan Quin company come in and put all these high-rise buildings up. You know, try to keep it the way it's been for the last 50 years. And take those old buildings and, you know, that's what we're trying, what what's the landscape guideline? What what color can you do the building? So when somebody goes like the guys who just did the Los Melinos Brewery down there, it's gonna be a great looking building when they get done. It's almost done. South Coast Distributing, properties are selling down there left and right. And guys, it is not a dead area. And it's, and and that's why I say you got a lot of, like, invited anybody to come to one of our meetings. We got a lot of people that have invested in that area now. And let's take advantage of and fine tune the specific plan. So you run down for permit to build something or. And, you know, wanna change your building around. Let's give them the tools that, and so staff don't have to sit there and say, well, we gotta have a red roof, we gotta have this landscaping. What do we, that's what I think the gold is here with the Pacific Plan, is to fine tune what the general plan laid out. Not to go changing zones and everything. And that to me, sit on that for 10 or 15 years and see what happens. But if there's no gap, no guideline, guy doesn't know how, do I put the sidewalk over here? Do I do this? What color? What, what, you know, you did. To me, it should be industrial, you know, we're gonna, you go down there to make business, you know, there's a lot of retail that come into the surfing, the furniture store. They're all passionate about keeping that area good. And I think that's what we need to build on. So that's my two cents.
Thank, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And Chris, we've reviewed within the last year or so, a couple of projects down there, the brewery and the. I guess the shipping company right there along the trainers one. And we had some great discussions at design review and actually enjoyed. Working on those projects. And I don't see that this changes the way we would look at those projects. Does, I think we're still. Staying in the same vein. We've been working in, is that correct?
Somewhat. So the, this project doesn't. Action on an implementation measure to update the design guidelines according to the policies. So I had showed you a policy that says a, an eclectic mix of architectural styles, materials and so on. I do know of those projects you mentioned and I have heard from businesses that. When they went through the process, it wasn't all that clear to, to the city and them that they had. A, a clear direction to not follow the, the types of materials and design that we. Come to expect in a lot of other areas of city that are Spanish. The area is not supposed to be Spanish, you know, it's supposed to be Los Melinos. And so a big part of, I'll tell you, the biggest part of this effort. Has been narrowing down what that means and trying to get some consensus among the business. And that is the focus of a, a designer view subcommittee item next week to, to run some of our ideas. And the public comments by the subcommittee and get some direction. Also, that project you mentioned on 309 Caide los Melinos, the, the remodel. That is going back to the subcommittee and from the beginning, I was involved behind the scenes and reviewing the plans. To not only follow the general plan, but. Mirror some of the comments that I've been getting through this project process. You know, more recently, we've had some work done with our maintenance staff. We did a walk with some of the businesses down there and public works. Gave me input on the street scene of Caide los Melinos. So. The, the item next week will be to discuss that in a little bit more detail. But we're not talking about a radical departure from what you see down there. It's more like to clarify. What the businesses say they want maintaining the feel of the area.
Okay, and has the business group been. Noticed that we're gonna be talking about that next week?
Yeah, I've been updating them and I've been sending them documents.
Okay, we will open it up for more comment.
Thank you, thank you, yes. Was the, you know, that we're adding properties into the specific plan area. Obviously, I'm sure they've been notified. Has there been any feedback from them? Are they happy about it, not happy about it?
I have not heard from them. We did, we send notices. To all the properties within the proposed boundary and then some beyond. And I didn't hear from any of them.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. I don't want to belabor the point, but I think that Mr. McGuire brings up a very interesting issue, which is. You know, if we want to encourage mixed use out there, but we have very deep properties, yeah, you're not gonna get. Commercial on the whole ground floor that, that functions or works. So and I've heard that, well, that should be associated with the housing element or the general plan. Quite frankly, I'm a little bit unclear as to exactly where, how it gets implemented, but it does seem like now's the time to do it. So if, if staff is suggesting that, well, it would be better addressed in this different document and they're all supposed to come together at the same time. How do we ensure that that's properly considered in that other document?
No, all the, the standards would need to be consistent in more than one document. So the general plan, the specific plan, the zoning code. Whatever applies to that area, it would have to be consistent. What I'm just saying is that. There'll be a concentrated effort at looking at our zoning. For implementation of the housing element and that effort will inform work that goes into this document. You know, it might take the place of amending, say, the specific plan. Before it is folded into the implementation plan. So I think what is a little confusing is the phasing of everything. And, and that's why I, you know, I don't have a flow chart, right, that very clearly says that from this point, we go to this point and that point. You know, in the end, it all comes together and that is the implementation plan that goes to the coastal commission. And we're required by law to make everything consistent.
I guess I'm a little bit confused then. I mean, isn't the idea of a specific plan to. Implement specific things in a specific area that's not necessarily consistent with other parts of the city?
You can have an overlay, you know, one, one of the things that we're looking at is a housing overlay. To address some of these zoning issues for the housing element. It would, it would be incorporated into the specific plan as needed so that it's an effective tool for implementing the general plan. And, and so. You know, all, all this input is important and we are going to be addressing it. I'm just stating that. You know, we are, we are working in tandem with other efforts and. It's to be pulled together and to, and maybe Cecilia, can you add on to that?
Yeah, actually, I guess I want to ask a question. Chris, is that, and that is. Is there? A drawback or reason why we couldn't address mixed use differently in the specific plan than we do citywide? With respect to the development standards?
I do see a. An issue with regard to allowing housing on the first level. Because the general plan doesn't allow that with the mixed use one zone. And that is the type of issue that we would be. Addressing with the zoning for the housing element to yield the number of units needed to meet arena. So that, and that's a general plan amendment. If we want to do that, I, I think we would need new direction or talk about it separate.
Can, can I jump in on that? I'm, based on what I heard, I wasn't, you said housing on the first floor or ground level. And, and yet that's not what I heard Mr. McGuire point out. Mr. McGuire pointed out that point thirty-five FAR called commercial. On a deep lot is unrealistic. So maybe the balance of the first floor could be, you know, parking or something. I wasn't, I wasn't saying that we overpack it with residential, but it does make sense to me that, you know, commercial. For the most part is logically gonna be only so deep. I don't know what that depth is. I'm not a commercial expert. Whether it's 60 feet or 80 feet or 100 feet, but beyond that, I mean, you have some bowels of some building that no one wants to go in. So anyway, that's my two cents. I just, sometimes I worry that we, we talk about these things and, you know. Then they might get lost in getting folded into or properly considered elsewhere. And I just think it's bringing up a good point. That's all.
Okay, this is for Chris and Cecilia. We have mixed use zones on El Camino where. Depending on certain circumstances, residential could be on the first floor. With certain. Considerations or a certain process to do it. And I think Mark's saying, is that something that could be done here?
Yeah, that, that, that goes back to, so to, there's two, two parts to this response. First regarding parking on the first level and. That, that is totally something that can be done, I, I, within the scope of this project, you know, not, not requiring. Retail on the first level throughout the property. That, that would not require a general plan amendment. That's just a regulation. So I, I do think we could look at that. Now for housing on the first level of mixed use projects. There's a limited number of mixed use zones that allow that. That's the mixed use 3.1 zone. And the mixed use 3.3 zone outside the core of the downtown. The balance of the mixed use zones do not allow it on the first level. So if we were to allow housing on that level, and this is based on the general plan. It would require an amendment to the general plan. And to yield the housing units on some of the housing element sites. It's my understanding that we would be looking at the zoning of those properties and if changes are needed to yield. The arena, then that would be part of that project that would be folded in again as part of the work program to tie everything together.
Okay. When is the next meeting that you'll be meeting with the? Public for this? I think you had a schedule, correct? Or are you all done with your? Public meetings?
Yeah, I don't have a official date to meet with. The Los Molinos Business Group, it's not a regular. Meeting that I. You know, like the first Tuesday of the month. It's more of an as needed meeting. Is there interest in attending a meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to attend it if it's gonna happen.
Okay. They do have a monthly meeting and so I can make a point of attending that meeting if, if you want to be there as well.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other comments? I think, I think we realize. There's a lot of. Dubtailing all these different documents at this point in time. This effort is to get our. Doc center row for the housing element, local coastal plan, et cetera, et cetera. And I think he's going on the right direction and. I think I don't have any specific changes for him to make at this point in time, so I think we can say. You know, move ahead. Let's see if everyone nodding their heads, that's probably the direction we're gonna go here. But if you can keep us appraised, because I'd love to hear the public comment. On this and it's a little easier in those kind of meetings to. Have a little give and take and talk back and forth. Across a table rather than a. Meeting like this.
Yeah, yeah, I, I will mention to the, the business group about this. Design review subcommittee meeting and maybe there'll be interest. In attending that meeting, because I, I think that. Forums could get in a little bit more detail on the issues that they care most about. So that could be a good opportunity to, to discuss these issues with you.
Very good, I agree, um, I'll. Give, let's see, this was.
I just gonna pass on the meeting for the group has been meeting the first Wednesday of every month. So, yeah, we meet at the, the, uh, last, the furniture store there on the secondhand old furniture store there.
Oh, yeah.
And at five o'clock on first Wednesday of each. Now, we can put it out to if it changes or something, but that's what we normally shoot for. And that we'll get all the guys there and then. I want to lay out to like I do with Chris, anybody wants to go walk the area at any time with me, I mean, I've been there. More and longer than I should want to talk about, but. I know the area and I can do with Chris, I'll walk around and if you're not real familiar with the area and maybe that gives you more input. I'll offer that to any, anytime.
I'll take that.
Chris has got my phone number.
Very, very good, and I went through the general plan process with you.
That's right.
So. Totally familiar with that and spent a lot of good afternoons at Molinos. Thank you. Chris, you know.
I just said I, I'll take him up at his office.
Very good. And that is, let's see, I've got some contact information for you here.
Great.
Okay, he's very good on the first item, we will go to. Thank you, Chris, good job.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
The next one is. Let's see, let's go. Up here to study session, the next one is. Specific plan amendment for Forester Ranch, Marblehead Coastal, Marblehead Inland. Rancho San Clemente and Toledo, Kyle Weber is gonna be presenting this.
Hello, good evening, planning commissioners, can we see the presentation that I'm sharing?
Yep.
That is, yes, okay, so tonight, we're having a continuation or a follow-up of the study session held last year regarding the pending amendments to the city's specific plans. So staff held the first study session with the planning commissioners in December. Where we discuss our current status and work underway for the specific plan amendments. And not to be too redundant with the study session, we just had a moment ago, but staff presented our progress of the project. Where our goals obtain consistency with the general plan and the city's coastal land use program by making a variety of amendments going to. Specific policies, land use areas. And relevant development standards. So this project is a city council priority listed in the strategic implementation program. And the modifications are also necessary to comply with state law. That requires consistency between adopted documents. And so as a refresher, this particular project amends five of the seven specific plans in the city listed here. Whereas obviously West Pico Corridor and Pier Bowl specific plans are being updated separately. So at the first study session, the planning commission focused primarily on implementation of general plan goals and policies. To permit the development of automobile related services. In industrial business park districts designated within solely Rancho San Clemente specific plan. That is what we discussed at the last study session. So here on the slide are the general plan goal and policy, is the general plan goal and policy related to automobile uses. Which we can come back to the slide at any time during the presentation and afterwards, if any discussion we need to cut deeper into this. So implementing the general plan goal and adopting provisions of the specific land use policy requires staff to modify. The specific plan documents by updating. Definitions for vehicle related uses. As well as assigning permitting requirements to those uses. And expanding the location where those uses will be permitted. And I'll be going over these changes proposed by staff in the presentation hour today. We're looking for consensus on two things. So one, our staff's proposed permitted and conditionally permitted use requirements. That are presented in the staff report, are they acceptable in terms of allowing new vehicle related uses? To the business and industrial park areas? As well as do they encourage new vehicle related uses? In a relocation of existing vehicle related uses to these areas? And two, do the minimum development standards in the zoning code pertaining to such uses adequately, adequately address? The city's desired criteria for new vehicle related uses to exist in these particular specific plan, planning areas. And so we would like this to include a discussion on how staff will define. What would be considered indoor and or outdoor auto related uses, which I will expand on. Later in this presentation. So first, it's important to point out that the proposed changes will affect that business and industrial planning areas in both Rancho San Clemente and Toledo specific plans. So in Rancho San Clemente, some auto related uses. Such as major and minor repair are currently permitted or conditionally permitted east of Kai de Cerro. So while we are increasing types of uses allowed, we're also expanding the allowed uses to the business and industrial park areas west of Kai, et cetera. The map of Rancho San Clemente top right here is, I believe, available as attachment to. Of the study session report. And then in the map on the. Bottom here in Toledo, the business park area south of Avenue of Pico. Will be modified to allow auto related uses, so this is something we did not quite discuss the previous study session, but important to note. So to reflect the intent of the general plan goal and policies, the definition. For automotive services in the specific plan will be updated to include. Vehicle sales, leasing and renting as well as. The inclusion of electric vehicles in preparation for. Emerging vehicle market. And so the, the red underlying text here is what we are adding to accommodate the intent of the goals and policies. The definition here is also available on page three of the study session staff report. So definitions for vehicle rental and sales and vehicle service and repair related facilities will be added. Matching the definitions in the zoning code. The definitions are provided in staff report on pages three and four. Major and minor automotive repair services are currently permitted. In the portions of industrial and business park areas, Rancho San Clemente, east of Kai de Cerro previously mentioned. However, vehicle rental, leasing and sales are currently unpermitted, so we will be. Proposing to permit those in line with the general plan goals. Goal and policy, a vehicle repair. Rental and leasing is currently permitted in Toledo business park planning area. And so the updates to the Toledo specific plan. Will add vehicle sales, service stations and other auto related uses other than retail. So staff proposed permitted uses adds a rental. Sale and leasing of automobile vehicles with permitting requirements dependent. On the number of cars proposed. And if the establishment will have indoor or outdoor vehicles on site as an effort for staff to control aesthetic compliance with city design guidelines. So staff is currently working on specific definitions for what is considered indoor or outdoor. Regards to development standards or regulations applicable to both. Types of automobile related uses indoor or outdoor. But staff would like to get input from planning commissioners on defining indoor uses if there are. Opinions on that and for the purposes of. Auto related establishments. So the discretionary requirement for minor vehicle repair. We're looking at the table here. They're permitted to be proposed, they're proposed to be permitted by right, and so the goal here is to encourage. Any new developments and the relocation of existing repair shops along El Camino Real. To transition to industrial business park specific plan areas. We're permitting maybe less stringent. And as mentioned in the staff report. In addition to the required use permit listed in the table, a site plan permit is required. Along with an architectural permit for any new development. So these additional permitting requirements entails there will be recommendations from. D R C, the design review subcommittee. Provided applicants proposing auto related establishments that are new. Establishments in any of the expanded areas where we'll be permitting auto related uses. So this also ensures that the site design and architectural features meet all zoning code regulations as well as city design guidelines. So back to this, staff's report details the proposed definitions, which I have a slide of those definitions if we want to go over them individually. It also. Details the permitting requirements for those uses. And staff is specifically looking for any feedback on anything presented in the report along with the two topics. Previously mentioned and also listed here again on the screen. And once again, we are also looking for input or discussion on preferences for how staff will define. Indoor and or outdoor uses for auto related vehicle sales, rental and leasing. So as of now, all uses in the business, industrial and industrial park areas must be conducted entirely. Within an enclosed building or. Within an area enclosed on all sides by a solid wall or fence. At least six feet in height. And so that's something to consider if we want to modify that when we're looking at definitions for indoor and outdoor establishments. And I will leave this here, but that does conclude my presentation, I'm happy to answer questions or facilitate discussion on a topic.
Thank you, Kyle, do we have any questions for Kyle?
Yes. Can, can you just revisit the? Toledo business park location, please? Confused on where that is.
Yeah, I see that it's not highlighted very well, so we have Avenue of Pico, are you able to see my cursor?
Yep.
So we have Avenue of Pico and the business park is this.
It's on east side of Pico?
So I said south, but right, so it would be the southeast side, correct?
Okay, and it's above. Avenue Vista Hermosa, it's, it's above it?
It's above La Plata.
La Plata, yeah, that's. Okay.
Kind of behind the Bella Colina golf course. Exit to it.
Okay. And it would be the blue?
I'm colorblind, if this area is blue.
Okay. The bottom part right here.
Where it says BP, is it not large enough?
No, I can see it now and it's just, I wasn't sure the legend and that's. Okay. Gotcha.
This map is taken directly from the Toledo specific plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that, is that, what is that road that's? Just, just below the dotted line. Right above your cursor to the, right there, that road, you know that road?
I do not know off the top of my head, but.
That's what I'm, okay, gotcha.
Thanks again, Cecilia.
Because.
Curves around.
Yes, 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 so there is an industrial area there now. So all your, and I know on that corner is a medical center. So what you're saying is we're just introducing the. In this business park, the, the automotive as a use, as an additional use, that's all this is about.
That's correct. To allow uses to exist there.
Which includes not just repair, but sale and leasing of vehicles as well.
Correct, right now in Toledo, the rental. And leasing is allowed. And so defining. Sales would, would open that up to. A new use permit in Toledo.
Okay, and then. The definitions for all of those uses are. What you're really seeking input on. Is what you're saying, is that's your basic tenant?
These are, yeah, so the definitions are separated into two separate categories, we have vehicle rental and sales, which includes dealerships. And then the other category, category is vehicle service and repair related facilities. So for the first one, we're separating definitions. For the first category for vehicle rental and sales, we're separating definitions for dealership rental and sales and that's. To allow us to add any special development standards that may just encompass that type of use. But. For vehicle service and repair related facilities, the second category, we have major and minor repair, so we can determine. What kind of repair service would be permitted by right or would require additional use permit? But then vehicle service and repair related facilities, we're also making sure that we include service stations and. Car washes, for instance.
Okay. Yeah, and I see that, I see what you have here as far as what you're. Like, for example, a vehicle rental, if it's indoor, fewer than ten vehicles, that's just by permit. But if they want to do more than ten, then that's gonna be a minor. Conditional use permit or something like that, whatever the M stands for.
Right, that's correct, and so that's slightly different than what we have as a use table for, I have it up on the slide right now, what we have in the zoning code for neighborhood commercial. And commercial zoning districts. And so it's.
Okay.
Different, we don't separate them as indoor or outdoor. And also minor repair in other parts of the city not in the business or industrial parks are conditionally permanent regardless. If a minor or major repair.
Okay, I got it now, yeah, this looks good, thank you.
Yeah, just a quick question or two, so the impetus for this is. To. Bring the zoning in alignment with the general plan, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and. Did you want, you, you, you said you wanted some direction from us or input on indoor versus outdoor? What were you, what were you? Suggesting specifically?
So it's a discussion that we have not had, we haven't had a comprehensive discussion about this amongst staff. But we know that right now, for instance. Any, any use that is approved in industrial business park areas must be operated entirely within an enclosed building. Unless you provide. Walls or fencing at least six feet in height, and so when we're looking at. Car sales, rental or leasing. What, what would exactly be considered operating that use indoors? It, you know, there's a number of ways we could go if we have vehicles on site outside, but. The operation of signing contracts and going over sales more of an office uses taking place indoors, does that mean the establishment is in indoor use? They, they, along that line, if there's opinions about that. I know Cecilia might have some input on this.
Yeah, I think it, you know, when it comes to allowing vehicle sales in the industrial parks, that is kind of a, a new phenomenon. And I think when we think of allowance of vehicle sales, we think of those. Large lot dealerships with the sea of cars outdoors and the banner flags. And I don't know that that's, you know, what we want to see in the industrial parks, one. To kind of, you know, compete with industrial space that is occupied by employee, employment generating uses. And, and the other. Employment generating uses and and the other is the aesthetics. But if you have an operation for sales that is indoors. You know, that kind of changes the characteristics. You know, you don't know what's happening inside the building. You know. The. So that's kind of what we're thinking about. If you if you do have, if you do contain your operations indoors. It's a minor conditional use permit for the use. If you're doing anything, if it's an existing building and you're doing any exterior work to modify it. You know, we still want to look at that through a discretionary process, but we could lower the decision level to make it easier. You know, maybe it's a minor conditional use permit or minor site plan permit that goes to design review for any exterior or physical changes. But it's a zoning administrator, not necessarily planning commission. But if it is something like a large auto dealership, that is a full conditional use permit. That would go to the planning commission for consideration and, you know, wouldn't be a zoning administrator decision. So those are just kinds of the things that we're looking at distinguishing an outdoor operation from an indoor operation. And if we do make that distinction, you know, what do we mean by indoor? You know, or one hundred percent of the operations indoors, is it eighty percent of the operations, fifty one percent? You know, so we're, I think, just trying to figure out what does it mean to be indoor? And if you guys have any, you know, ideas or. You know, any input. Providing us with that direction, we'd appreciate it.
So what I'm envisioning is what I, when I hear you speak is like people now are beginning to buy cars online. And then you go to a delivery center just to do a pickup. I know that's how Tesla does it. And they are primarily in in these kind of environments, industrial areas or. Where they just have a parking lot and an office and you just go and sign your papers and pick up your vehicle and leave. So that's what you're talking about, something like that?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of awkward because. Traditionally, right? Car dealerships and retailers have all their inventory outside. So are you gonna? You have parking requirements for those buildings. And so it creates X amount of parking space. What are you going to do? Leave that all vacant? To stuff everything inside? It's just. I don't know, it really seems like a commercial use to me, not a, not an industrial, but. I don't have any, you know, great insight for you. Maybe some of my colleagues do.
Yeah, during the, this was a big discussion for. Moving the. Auto oriented ones off of El Camino downtown. And where are you going to put them? And. The major comments were all the signage on the cars marked down. You know. One owner, whatever, on the cars. The car sitting in the parking lot was not the issue. It was distractions like that or the banners that Cecilia mentioned. So having. Cars parked in the lot wasn't really the problem. Was all the. Ancillary signage that didn't even come close to meeting the sign ordinances. Or having maintenance that was exposed to public view, basically having the doors open on to. The main corridor, you know, it was entered from the back. Would be a problem? Not really. You know, but all these tire stores have racks of tires out front. Yeah, those were the big major concerns and why. You know, for beautification program, it was okay, let's get them somewhere else. Not the fact it's an automobile.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So are some of those, are some of those details incorporated into this proposed? Ordinance relative.
Kyle's working on.
Ancillary signage and so forth?
It's all being, I mean, it's all being updated. There's things with signage in particular. To a. Commissioner Crandall's point, we're getting there. That's that's something that will be updated.
Okay, awesome. I did have one specific question on page. Well, let's see here. It's the last page of the proposed ordinance. D talks about abandoned or converted service stations. Service stations that become vacant or cease operation beyond one hundred eighty days shall be deemed abandoned. And at the city's discretion, owners shall be required to remove all underground storage tanks, fuel pumps, pump islands, freestanding canopies. I don't know, one hundred eighty days seems kind of short to me. You know, some owner has a heart attack and. He's out of commission for a while and bang, now he's got to rip up his service station. I don't know. That's my comment.
Okay.
I think my big comment would be if we're talking about repair services. That, you know, that's indoor. Start living the outdoor. Because where I was in Downey, they were trying to get everybody from outdoor to indoor, because the old days you were outdoor. But then as the newer days come around, I mean, your repair facility is sweaty, new dealership. You know, had indoor repair facilities. Personally, I don't see any dealership as we've done in the past. You know, when you're younger. And we're coming in the second, because they want to be on the main thoroughfare. They want signs. They want the distraction. Big stuff plus reorganizing into an auto center. So I think if we're moving it up to the industrial and business areas, which are up. You know, farther, I think. I think even for sales, probably most of it needs to be inside. Because you don't want to have twenty five cars or whatever sitting out. You know, side waiting, there needs to be some kind of restriction on how many. Cars you can have delivered in their yard or wherever it is, if it's inside, you probably don't care. But there needs to be some kind of storage mechanism on the number of cars that are waiting to be picked up. Those are about the only things I see. That repairs need to be inside. And then if you are having these. Dealers, I mean, you'd love to have point of sale, that'd be great. They're probably most of leases, so really not generating money.
And we're seeing more and more of the big car lots shut down. Okay, Kyle, a question for you. In this zone. And in these industrial parks, they have. Companies that. Do air conditioning work and whatnot, and they have a back lot that is fenced in. And all their equipment and supplies are usually. In those, I'm thinking of one. I think it's in the Toledo. Business park. So a dealership with these requirements could have a back lot. Fenced in. That had. A big storage yard that they happen to park cars in versus having materials and. The business trucks. Is that a stretch or? That'd be allowed, but not?
Let's see, so if we look at the minimum standards for. Well, so if this is a dealership, if we were to look at minimum standards for that in terms of.
It happens to be a dealership, sure.
Yeah.
Problem with outside storage, if if they approach it the same way that the other people in the business park did.
Agreed. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to miss because there are parking stands, but then there's outdoor display minimum standards as well.
Yeah, whether or not the outdoors would take up their parking. Well, the particular ones I'm thinking of, they have parking outside in front of their building. And they've got the storage yard, because most of these are. Industrial buildings. So in a case like that, they could use their storage yard instead of for building supplies, materials, crates and all. They can get X number of cars in square footage. And it wouldn't take away from their. Business park, I mean. Dealerships typically have what, eight, ten parking stalls for a huge car dealership? Not very many.
Right.
At once, so. I think that can be addressed. But I'm not opposed to saying it all has to be inside in the case where. They have a. A yard that is. Out of view, whatever. On site.
Right, so if we look at this table, I just want to make sure I'm getting some of like a component of your comments straight. So if we have. An establishment that would like to be considered indoor. Vehicle dealership with. Ten vehicles on site. They should still be able to store some of their. Vehicles outside onsite and be considered an indoor operation.
Yeah, I'm thinking like an enterprise rental car. They're usually kind of remote, they're not. They'll even come pick you up to come get your rental car. If they've got a yard to put them in, I think that's just fine. I don't see a problem with it. Addressing it that way and. Certainly. Make for. Some of these lots possibly on El Camino to. Be more open to going up there. Make it. User friendly.
When it says vehicles on site here. Does that mean vehicles inside or vehicles just somewhere on the site, meaning inside or outside? Because when I first read it, I thought, well, indoor, ten or more vehicles on site, meaning the vehicles are all indoor.
There are some establishments that would have, I didn't mean to cut you off, sorry.
Vehicles all being inside?
So there are circumstances where there are some businesses will have a warehouse with vehicles inside. How likely that is? In these areas, it's unclear.
But you're you're correct, that was the intent of.
I mean, the ten vehicles would be.
Would be inside.
Yes.
Yeah, but you're also recognizing that they may need to store some vehicles. We should have a number, a cap on how many they could quote unquote store. But that storage would need to be shielded like any other kinds of storage. With fencing or landscaping or.
Minor conditional use permit isn't a problem. I can even see some of these putting in racks. And having basically two, two levels of parking.
Inside, right. I'd just be worried as they're outside, what direction they are, because some of the. As you get farther up the industrial areas, like remember the church thing that we approved? You're starting to get.
That's up there.
Have a storage facility that's facing the residential and somebody's looking down at it, they're going to get.
And that's what we've got the review process for, to make sure that tho- those particular sites aren't developed that way. And we might want to. We were talking about. Two level parking in some of the mixed use areas and whatnot. Maybe a year ago, year and a half ago. You might look into. Making some kind of caveat that when we're talking about. X number of vehicles on site, that's on grade. Unless there's another approval process to go. Tiered parking.
Do we need to have anything about vehicles? Occasional cleaning. If it's shielded and behind back in a storage yard, I wouldn't think so, but sometimes you see car lots, not like a retail lot, but. Back storage where like, you know, they might sit there for four, five, six months and they get completely filthy. And then they wash them to deliver them, but you wouldn't want to see that up in front of a vehicle. I mean, in front of an establishment.
That would have to be in the yard.
Exactly. So do, does that something either be addressed here?
I think Kyle should. Address that.
Okay, yeah, I think that right now, because the specific plan requires. If not conducted entirely within enclosed building, we have the concealment of six foot wall and fences. If that's a visual blight that you're talking about, but there's also them standards for noise. And if they are not conducting a business entirely within enclosed building, they have to comply with. Other environmental. Permitting as well, per the specific plan. And so.
D says car wash, so you got to get a CUP anyways.
Right.
They're going to wash the cars. I didn't even say detailing, you wash the car. So they got to.
Well, that's probably for.
Well, technically it says car wash, meaning car wash, but if they are cleaning the car, you're washing the car.
I got a single guy with a pressure washer walking around.
I think that in that case, a major repair. Establishment would be considered allowed to have a car wash. They're also applying for CP where a minor repair would not. Have a car wash, but defining car wash, if you're just washing the car down or if it's a. Arch. Engineering machine.
Iconized car wash.
Yeah, so that might need, might need to be carved out, what that, so that's a really good point to bring up.
I do a little research, Kyle, on this, because I think some of these businesses do wash their service vehicles. In their yard. And having to get a conditional use permit through planning commission to do that. We don't want to burden them with that. This should, this should be something that staff can. Do at a staff level.
Okay, yeah, so that's a good, that's a good point. I'll make sure the research.
Just the definition of a car wash to, you know, adjacent to a service station, yeah, they're both. You know, one of those. Man drive through it, ones. All be part of the same CUP like we did the Valero. Gas station. But for just. Washing them in the yard. I think staff can handle that.
The the thing that comes up in my mind is if we're allowing minor repair by right. You know, there's, there's probably. This might, this might require a discussion with public works when we look into stormwater or any kind of. I mean, yeah, it's some, something when it comes to drainage and. Using water on site that's, I think, doesn't look at.
Clarifier or.
Yeah.
Did before it goes down.
Right, so that's something we'll have to consider too.
Any more comments or directions to Kyle? More things to consider? Do you have any questions of us, Kyle, on what we've recommended to look at?
So we talked about permitting requirements and it seemed like we had any qualms with what we're proposing in terms of. Types of permits or what is permitted by right. Minimum standards for vehicle related uses. We talked about. Outdoor display of cars or storage of cars outside, which are vehicles in general. We did mention signage, which is something we'll look into. I think we covered everything. We also discovered, we also discussed. Indoor and outdoor, and we got some good feedback on that, so I don't, I don't believe I need. Anything from. Commissioners.
Okay, the only thing I might just a clue on that signage issue. I consider that no signage will be on any vehicle that can be read from. Ten feet away, certainly a. Suggested manufacturer retail price stickers. Isn't an issue on a sideline or whatever.
I see.
I mean, so. They can have a little bit, but just. No big bang signage.
You don't want antenna flags?
The dancing guy up there?
If it's within their storage yard, I really think that's a problem.
Yeah.
You know, if it's fenced in.
I'm.
And then the the double level. If they want to use lift inside or outside, make sure that that has to be reviewed. Particularly outside.
Yeah, I think when it comes to this area, a potential easy fix is you cannot see certain signs on cars viewed from a public right away. And that just goes in line with the fencing or walls that are required. And if they do raise them for any reason, then they wouldn't be following. That condition that we would set for them to not be listed on the public right away.
Well, Kyle, would it? Be beneficial if we tried to differentiate between delivery centers? Where people have already basically done everything online, they paid the money, they've signed a contract, it's just a pickup place. Versus someone that's conducting like onsite sales.
And so if it. I think that would fall in line with your indoor vehicle rental.
But maybe call it out if the, you know. Maybe call it out if the, and you know, a delivery center is permitted versus somebody that's conducting onsite sales, that's the MUCP. Something like that, does it some kind of differentiation to tell them we're, we we want to encourage these delivery centers. These are good. You know, come on in town.
Sure. In the delivery center uh hypothetical example, would you see them as having more than ten vehicles uh on site, less than ten?
I don't, you know, I don't know the model, but yeah, usually they probably they get a couple of truck, transport trucks and they offload them and then they have their appointments of their customers and they come and they pick them up and then, you know, they probably have that twice a week or something like that.
Okay, I I think I'll I'll look into potentially separating delivery service and seeing if it may not already fit under permitted. And so, yeah, I'll take that.
Yeah, that's a a good point, because um you know, while we keep saying sales, even the delivery centers do act as point of sale locations. So, but I think um there's a way that we can differentiate that. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think we're good for Kyle to go back, keep on. Are there going to be any public um outreach within the uh business parks or anything?
We've done outreach concerning the proposed amendments before. And so with uh these particular changes, we plan on coming to the planning commission um as an item uh at least twice, and we will have a public review period in between there.
Okay, very good, very good. Any other comments by commissioners?
I know, sir.
I think we've uh gotten through both our items. Uh, we do have a
Thank you, planning commissioners.
Open to a motion to adjourn?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I believe our next meeting is April the sixth. Is that right? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Oh. Yes, okay, so I will move adjournment um to the next regular meetings of the study session and planning commission. Will be held on Wednesday, April sixth, twenty twenty-two at six PM at the San Clemente Community Center Auditorium.
Uh, second by Commissioner McCacken. A little voice, uh, vote, uh, Commissioner McCacken. Hi, Commissioner McCann.
Hi.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
Hi.